A lot of people here. I'd like to welcome you to the workshop for January 3rd, 2023. Vernon City Council Workshop. Yeah, do you want to begin? I have a picture.
Break your cell phone, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to be here. May the Lord have your hand upon us as we make decisions for the city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord. To the life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Candice, you're gonna take care of the grant update? Yes ma'am. It's that tiny, tiny writing and I'm sorry. Basically, everything's still on track. Just a couple of updates. The fire department one's not on here. We've gotten the equipment. We've sent them the check. And we're just waiting on our reimbursement check to come now. I had to go in and find out when it was actually organized to send, but that's done. Not great news. Ms. Quinn, can I tell them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not very good.
The grant that is going to pay Church Street. Which is gonna be your neighborhood revitalization grant up here on number one, the first one. Because the cost of everything going up. That's the rehab well number one and two. The second part of that grant is Church Street. You know, that community had to do the planning of that. They're the ones that put those things in order. They don't know that there's gonna be enough money left to pay Church Street after they did well with one of these. So, I did talk to Dale today, he's the engineer. He's done several jobs lately. He said that there may be enough money to be part of it. So, which y'all have it in your pocket for the next meeting. But the MSCAP, the scrap and all that has opened up. Deadline is March 17th. If y'all don't mind, I'm trying to get some of that money. That is what Yellow Jacket Drive is being paid with. Dale had said we couldn't have two open, but I did some research and found out that Avon Park has one from last year and went to the next year. So it is possible, I've already sent an email to FDOT to find out about that. So we are working on the Church Street. Now that's not saying we're not gonna have the money, but it's not looking real good.
What I'm saying, how far did Trey say that they were coming in?
They're coming to Pompey. They're coming from the city line, which is a half mile.
Would they pass Pompey?
They're coming to Pompey.
Yes, to Pompey.
Yes ma'am, because ours is supposed to finish church and go to Pompey.
Cause I was saying, hoping that would go past Pompey a little bit and get to church and maybe that was that.
Huh?
Is that what he said?
Yeah, it was half mile.
Jerry Brock, past Jerry Brock's is the city line.
Right, he's going from there back to Pompey.
That's halfway down the bridge yard.
Where they stopped the mill, the stuff they put down. I guess that's where the sign ends too.
Yeah, it's in the middle of that straightaway. The middle of the straightaway.
I was out yesterday. And that's why I said.
But when Trey came, that is when he said that they would have to come out past the city.
Past Pompey at all, I thought if he could maybe come in and do the church, maybe they would be satisfied. I'll talk to him tomorrow, ask him could he please come in and help to do the church. You know, pass that church a little bit and maybe they'll be satisfied.
And then like I said, I'm reaching out to the E O T to find out if we can qualify for any more. Not that she can tell me, but she can tell me if we can have more than one open at a time. And everything else is still going through the processes. We've sent the historical, just about forty something people emails, just trying to go through the line of everybody we have to notify. For the E O and other people. And that's pretty much it on the grant.
When they said they were, the church said they were coming back again. They go, they didn't long with that, but I don't know when, cause I haven't talked.
Okay.
But I just wanted to let you guys know, they said they were coming back again. Just get ready for the bar. Nice, you finish.
That's it, as far as the updates.
I guess Jason was gonna talk about the leaks.
Oh, I mean, twenty something total.
Yeah, did you want to do it or what?
Either way, we just, we know y'all can't vote, but we just wanted to let you know. Let y'all know what's going on. There are, the freeze leaks will not be on the bill they just got. It'll be on the next bill. There's three leaks in there though. You got Belinda and Randy, Jack Paul, and one other lady. Those were just a few days before we read meters. And we'll just ask y'all to vote on those at the meeting. But we wondered, could we go ahead and tell the people that the city is gonna?
No.
Do something? No, okay, I wouldn't. Okay, Candice, you can't?
I need y'all to add me to the list.
No.
Chad was out there and I told him, I come out from his house when he hit to the mid reading, which is done more. So they didn't read.
Yeah, that's right.
They didn't read mine.
I read it the other day, Friday, wasn't it?
We got my.
The re-read?
Re-read.
You were on the re-reads?
You're on the re-reads.
He read the line, they got three lines. Which I looked at the bill, it didn't go up. Well, this might be next.
Because.
Yeah, next one, it'll be the next one. The next one, some of these people are gonna have.
The Walker bill.
A lady called today and I guess she hadn't been home in days. So she don't even know how long hers has been, but.
Yeah. Some of those, they were gone all weekend, they ran for three or four days.
I mean, we want to do something, but I don't think we should put that out.
Okay.
Until we know what's going on. Looking at and how much money we're looking at. There may be weight up there, we may be.
Yeah, there's probably three or four of them, I know it's gonna be well over two, three thousand dollars.
Huh? Two or three thousand?
Oh yeah. This lady right over here, I bet she's with fifty thousand gallons.
Hey, y'all normally run a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand every day? I was running over four hundred thousand a day. For a few days, I can't hear them exactly, but like two, three, maybe four. Then take me back down. I thought y'all.
So that's it, we just wanted y'all to be aware, cause everybody's calling. But we told them that, you know, y'all won't have a voting meeting until a few weeks. But we won't have the reader meetings by then anyway. So we just wanted to tell them.
Call meeting on that? After they do the readings?
Okay.
To make sure that we can look at it.
Okay.
Yes ma'am. Is this for the back system of city halls here, maintenance on that?
The air conditions, I think they're sixteen here. They haven't been, the air handlers are gross. They haven't been cleaned in years probably. And it's just, so my office quit the week that it was so cold. And remember it was freezing in here? Well, it's cause my office runs the hallway. When, I mean, it took us a long time, we had to get in the attic to figure that out. But it couldn't get no airflow when it was working because it's just so full of junk. Which is probably a lot of that mildewy smell that we're smelling also. So I just wanted to see if we could maybe get a couple of them serviced a month or something. It would be way too expensive to do it all at one time. But maybe if we could just start the process of having them cleaned.
Because they really need to be cleaned before we started to switch over to air again.
Yeah, cause it's, I mean, it's probably gonna be, I don't know, because they're so bad, they wouldn't give me a rec. Normally if they come out and clean their handler, they give you a rec, you know, it's a hundred and sixty-nine dollars or something. They're so bad, I couldn't get just a, cause they don't know how long it's gonna take. But anyway, they did get it going back, you can tell it's not fifty-four degrees in there now. But, and also I ordered filters because we don't know how long it's been since the filters have been changed. But you can't, there's nothing going through those filters.
One of the last time was dump work.
Clean it up.
They did clean it up to.
Well, I see.
They used to have a contract with somebody, I remember.
I couldn't find anything under the air conditioning.
Yeah, cause I think it was P and P used to do all the work here.
P and P?
Yeah. I thought.
Well, didn't they change it to units? Changed it though.
Well, Bright Hall came and got us running last week. And the community center running the week before. So, but I just looked at a little bit of the past and I know right here we spent over a thousand dollars last summer. Just, and if they were maintained, it probably might not be as like that. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Do you want to get some, will they, do you know anybody that can give us quotes?
They said, I can, I mean, like I said, I talked to the one that came. And they just did it an hourly price because he said he couldn't do a quote because of the situation they're in. And, but I can call a couple more as well. Sorry. And that's it on them.
Number four, is the tractor trailer side by side update?
So in the budget, y'all approved forty thousand dollar loan to do the side by side as well. It comes up to around fifty-four thousand.
With the loan?
With the loan, and we're approved for that, the bank has approved that loan. But because we budgeted the forty, we would have to do a, you know, have a meeting to. The extra fourteen thousand. And then also in that, you would have to, in the meeting, you have to say who you want to be the signer. They have to have that, the minutes from that meeting. So I wanted to go ahead and let y'all know, I could put it on the meeting agenda, but I just wanted y'all to be thinking about that extra fourteen. If that, if y'all were gonna do that. The tractor trailer combo itself is right at forty. And then the side by side is another fourteen.
Number five, the event coordinator for the city events.
Ms. Vicky said that she would love to volunteer to do that since we've had such.
Problems.
Problems. Lack of participation in the past couple of years. And I think that she's very organized and she will start Easter tomorrow. I mean, you know what I'm saying, she will have it together. And Mr. Goulding has already said that he could do the, like, I don't know what it's called, videos so that we could release them to the news.
Advertising.
Advertisements, yes sir. So if that's okay with y'all, she just wanted to make sure, cause she's excited to do it. She wants to see some, I told her I was a worker bee, I'm not organized like that, but I'll do the work.
We welcome her to do that. I do, I guess they'll announce me now. Okay, number six, request for Girl Scout room and art classroom. Where is this going to be?
That's, I told them I'd have to ask the council. We had the Girl Scouts called. They're trying to reorganize, I guess they kind of fell apart during COVID. And they're looking for a room that would house around twenty girls. Then we also had a gentleman come in, I think I put his name in that little addendum there, but I may not have. But Mike Jones, he wants to teach art classes. He said that he did it in, maybe it was in Chipley, I can't remember. But he had twenty or twenty-five people that did it. So he, it would be one time a week, but of course it would be after our closing hours here. So it would have to be in the community center or somewhere.
Would the Girl Scouts be during the day or after?
She said it would be usually after school, but might be on the weekends sometimes. So I figured that might also need to be in the community center.
You know, that literacy room is no longer used because when they came back open and they were there for a few months and nobody ever came, so they quit using it.
Well, I've been wondering what was, I was gonna ask y'all about that, cause it's still full.
Yeah.
But nothing was ever taken, but that room's open?
Right.
The literacy room?
Yeah, because the last time I was talking to her, I think her name was Mary? And she said, you know, no one would come and they tried it for three months and no one came. So they, they weren't willing to just come and sit there.
So the Girl Scouts is a nonprofit. I don't know if you would, it would be one time a week, but art would be profit. So he would expect to pay some kind of rent. But I think he would need to definitely be in the community center or something. Cause he would definitely be after five o'clock.
Well, we need to look at what type of rent, you know, we be talking to you for that. How many hours would he be there and stuff?
He said one time a week, between I guess an hour and two hours.
That should be a lot, yeah. But since it's for profit, we have to charge.
Right, cause we have to collect the tax and all that. So those are just the two. I told them that y'all couldn't vote at this meeting, but we would mention it and see if you wanted to take it further, farther or not.
Betty isn't here for the city signs, did you know what she was going to say?
She said that someone had mentioned her, I know we talked about it in the past, getting signs when you're coming, you know, welcome to Vernon, whatever. And she thought that it was a local pastor that had mentioned it to her. And thought that maybe he was suggesting the churches get together to fund the signs and maybe have an advertisement on the sign or something to that effect. But she has, that's all I know about it.
So that's the welcome to the city of Vernon sign, not the sign that we were talking about?
No, just like at the city limits, you know how when you go to Bonneville or?
Somewhere like that.
Yeah.
Number eight, in far as interviews and discussions in my opinion. We're not gonna do any interviews. Not now, I'm teaming.
Right, I'll call to schedule them. She, I just, they wanted me to make sure y'all picked your top three. Ms. Mary, I need your top three, I think. Oh Wendy, I want to do the interviews though.
Probably I can do it at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, okay.
Before the meeting.
Before the meeting.
You wanna come in early? Five o'clock? Okay. Candice, you have anything?
I think we just run low.
How about you?
I did reach out to the attorney representative developer for the Family Dollar about the fence. And he was moving in thirteen, they were supposed to get back to me this week.
To take it down?
They seemed to understand what the issue was.
Did they understand what we're talking about?
I took pictures from my vehicle showing.
Well, they know, I don't understand them, because they know in cities, you cannot come out past people's homes. If you have a privacy fence, like, you cannot come out past that person's, like, you. All the houses on the street, like where I live, down in St. Pete, all the houses, cause there was a privacy fence at our house. But it stopped at the corner of my house. It could not go over into my yard even, not in the front, in the back, but not in the front. They stopped at the, where your house is, that fence stopped right there. And the yard was open, they couldn't go, you know, put a fence up like that.
Do we, do we have something in?
No, we don't.
Says that we keep?
No, no, no.
But it's.
Cause it's never been a problem.
It's a danger regardless.
Yeah.
That's all.
I, I didn't think about it, we should probably update that one of the lawsuits was dismissed. The one that you, you know, copied it on. Couple, like, and we haven't met since then, so they don't know that.
No.
So.
You wanna tell them?
Yeah, it's.
How did I grab them?
It was during, everything was on, the lawsuit for, I think it was gender discrimination. I'm not sure how the lawsuit was worded, but that one was dismissed. We had to have a certain amount of employees and we did not have that many employees, so that was not. There's still some more parts of it that are active, but that's done. Yes, is that right? Okay. Joey, you have anything?
Yeah, we got two or three things Candice knows part of. Is that his last name is Russ. He lives in Westview. He's supposed to meet me at the cemetery Monday, he didn't show up. And I had a contact with Miss Rhonda and told her.
Okay.
I waited on him, I walked behind him, the graves, he never showed up. So it's in his ballpark now. But anyway, he got rude to Miss Rhonda. And Candice ended up giving him my number and she talked to him. And explained it to him, totally different now than in years past. He said the First Baptist Church, which Miss Rhonda says First Baptist Church has never had anything to do with cemetery. And I explained the whole process to him, I said, sir, listen. And I said, you know, and I know you have been on that, I said. And I said, the thing is now, I said, the city didn't own that cemetery, first of all. I said, we acquired the cemetery, I said, it was deeded to the city in the last three years at the most. I said, we had to survey it. I said, on both ends of the cemetery, we got problems. I said, fence problems on the outside, we don't own about twenty graves, he's on, Mr. Hicks is probably on over here. I said, I don't know where your plot is, I said, that's why I need to meet you out there and go from there and take you back to the council. I said, the problem is though, I said, and Miss Rhonda explained it to him. He said, First Baptist gave him the plots. He roped them off and drove a pipe down. They'd been dis, took up and somebody stole two of his plots. And I said, well, sir, I said, again, I have to look and see what, I don't know why somebody, unless it's the neighbor next buried next to you stole them. I said, I don't just see somebody being buried out there. But I said, listen, Miss Rhonda, they're bored. I said, Miss Rhonda's in charge, she come back to the council, whatever problem they have out there. I said, we trying to block the cemetery and all this and all this. And anyway, he got a little rude with me and I said, sir, I'm just telling you, until I meet you out there and know where you're talking about. And Miss Rhonda was gonna tell him, you know, if it was ruined, he could go ahead and coat the grave that he wants, but he had to pay for it. And I said, I'm with it, I said, the council is the same way. I said, now if he needs three plots, four plots, whatever he needed, if I there, I don't mind giving them to him. But he gonna have to, can't just drive a pipe back down and leave it like that, them days is over. But he didn't meet me. And Miss Rhonda called me, she said, if you gonna meet him, that's fine, cause I don't wanna face him. I said, well, I supposed to meet him Monday and Monday evening I'll let you know, you know, what we come up with, but he never showed up. So I told him, he's more likely to come to workshop and face the council. But I just told him, I said, you know, I, my folks is buried out there, some of them, I'm not gonna be buried out there. But I said, me and Miss Quinn, it's on the councils, went over this, different cemeteries. I said, people being buried. I said, the city of Vernon does not have no room out there, first of all. And we're trying to locate graves that's been there for years, that is another thing. And I said, we don't wanna bury somebody, I'll come to somebody else. And I said, it takes a while, you know, it takes a while, you just don't do nothing out. But he got rude with Miss Rhonda, and Miss Rhonda didn't mind yet, so. But he called back, so if he does, I'll tell him to do the workshop, he's gonna do workshop and explain the case. But until, y'all, you know, the same thing, until you know what he's talking about, that's what I told him. I said, sir, I don't know, you know, what you talking about.
When you know that person, are you heard his name?
Well, he said that Phil had stolen his grave. And I thought, sir, were these coated off and marked graves? Well, no, that's what I'm going to do. But she's told me, I gotta pay for them, da-da-da. And I said, well, so the city used to not own it, now they do, we pay six hundred dollars a month to have it mowed. I said, but the bigger problem is there's people buried out there that's not marked. And you don't just need to go start coating something off, there may be somebody there.
Yeah, so many people just went out there and put ropes, ribbons.
Well, see, we gonna run into problems down the line, like you said, but I haven't done it in a while. People's went out there and put any ropes and all up. But the thing is, they need, if they paid for the plot, I ain't asked Miss Rhonda, I hadn't told Miss Rhonda, I know they have several meetings at the lodge there. But the cemetery looks a hundred percent better than it did. The tree's gone out now, I looked at the graves, I waited thirty, thirty-five minutes on the guy, I said, listen, he called, he ain't coming, I'm not calling either. He told Miss Rhonda she could call him. I said, that's the first mistake. You know, he's the one that's on the plot, I'm not. Miss Rhonda, you should've told him, no, sir, you gonna call me. But anyway, he was rude toward, and I told Miss Rhonda I'd handle it and take it back to the council, but he didn't show up. So that's the first issue. The second thing I had, Larry Pippin called, of course. And he got a legal rap and I could've, it's my guys, they cut my timber on my property. And the thing is, we gonna have to go one way or another similar later on this council by that river. I said, so I told, I told Larry, he had a few words, and I ain't gonna mention what he said. But anyway, he said he was tired of calling, I said, listen, I'm gonna take care of it. And so I turned around and called Gary, I said, listen, did he send you over? He turned around and called Kevin. He sent a deputy over, and first the deputy didn't want to go. And I said, listen, Gary, the deputy, I said, hey, read, I said, there are two signs above that road. I said, stay off of that road and that big truck. I said, so, why also got a problem? All we gotta do is get that ticket book out and write him a ticket.
I got a picture, Chad sent a picture.
Well, this one, they done this morning. He stopped them at Larry Pippin's, going down Larry Pippin's way. I was getting ice this morning at six fifteen. Law truck took by my house and I knew he was gonna turn on Pompey Street. He slowed down and it took him about a minute and a half to make that turn. People had to stop. He turned and went down Pompey Street at six fifteen. All officers got to be doing is sitting there in the morning and writing them a ticket to break that. The man that's in charge is from Alabama.
And then he continued to do it.
They haul in timber, they write them guys a ticket, they gonna continue on, they gonna make it's paid, new payment, what? They gonna tear the highway up just like when Trey pays that road down there. They gonna tear it up.
That's gonna be tore up.
They gonna tear it up.
Well, lady did call today, I've got the picture, Chad sent, I don't know when he took the picture, the other day when he was reading meters. But the lady called to complain today because she said he was going so fast, he about took her out and it scared her. So.
That road, that road's like that thick.
Yes ma'am.
It's just destroying now.
They gonna tear Pompey Street up.
Oh yeah.
It was on it this morning, when I left, I watched it turn at six fifteen. I said, well, officers up there, they'd be writing tickets. She must not have caught one of them yesterday, but Larry sent me pictures of it. And he said, listen, what the council gonna do about it? And I take Larry back, I said, listen, food care, contact sheriff's department, they sent a deputy out there. And he takes it back, he said, fine. And, but they gonna complain until, you know, they stop.
But they gotta go down one road or the other, which, how they gonna get out?
They can go, they haul in the timber to pay them off. Only there's good down Long Valley to, yeah.
Yeah, but nowadays, when they pay Long Valley, what's gonna?
That's their problem, that's the terrible, you see, our problem is, it's that y'all know, at Congress, get that stretch paid.
Anyhow.
I'd rather be on that stretch than listen to Larry Pippin and Pompey Street. They gonna tear Pompey Street up, cause you know just why, their trees is planted.
Right there anyway.
And them roots, once you get a heavy load on them roots and all, she's gonna break that asphalt up. They'll tear Pompey Street up.
Yeah, she said it was already kind of bad spot on it.
She does, right past where they stopped, their bed place already. But I don't know, you know. I don't know, you know, what can you do? Signs on both ends of the road.
It's a sign right there, don't turn.
You sit over in the morning, they turning and going right down. All the big open. I was gonna let y'all know. And the only other thing, and I don't know, it's on, might be on the dollar store machine, why ain't the dollar gentleman there? He got a fence around the old farm. Who properly, I mean, I know it's the dollar store. But just say a child or anybody walks out there.
There's no fence around there.
Who's in, you know, seems like the main before the store even opened, they'd have to have a fence around. Just like the swimming pool issue before the insurance company, you know, they don't have a, and it's been open on six months. There ain't a hole, there ain't a fence around it nowhere. All you gotta do is walk off in.
And it's, and the ground is so saturated wet right there?
Yeah.
That a kid could really kind of get stuck and trip and just roll into the thing, because it's, I mean, I saw it just going to the, into the store.
It should've been part of that, that order, the county, I'm checking that for you.
Check on a couple, I pulled in there last night, like I said, and there was a couple kids out there playing, and, you know, they was probably twelve, thirteen, that was younger, older kids, but I was, I'm like her, if you get over there playing on that soft dirt, who's, who's fault? Should be the Dollar Store, shouldn't be nothing to the city, but, uh, we don't know the name, on the issue like that. But they, to me, before the store even opened, they should've had, had a fence.
I think so, yeah.
There's more than one store in town that they got that.
But, uh, another thing, the trailers, I think it's for, not before you hit my ass on the ride, all the jumping and all that. I guess, I don't know what they're gonna end up doing, you was covered up, you ain't been covered up for a while.
Well, they had a dumpster there, but the dumpster's gone now, they had a dumpster there forever, and I, I meant, apparently
That's the main roof.
I know, they, apparently they didn't put the stuff, they had the dumpster there forever, and apparently they didn't put the stuff in the dumpster, cause I thought they was gonna put all that stuff in the dumpster.
Now that stuff will go in that dumpster.
They had it cover up for a long, now they just let it just rain and soak, soak up.
They didn't have it, man.
Oh, no, it just soaked now. Well, tell me something, round here on, uh, that Dawkins, right there where the, where that cross from where, uh, what's those girls' name? They used to live there, the twins, they used to live across the street, there's, uh, like a field goal or something there. You saw that?
You talking about, we're almost at the end of, 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 uh, where you come out from the Dollar Store, almost at the end of football field right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's Armstrong.
Where?
In front of, yeah, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about cross from where Ollie and them used to see, there's a trail of, where they used to, you know what I'm talking about?
That's the place.
Yeah, I think we're talking about the same place.
Cross from the store, there's a
They put up kind of a fence.
And they put up a fence now, but they had that, uh, field goal there, and they was hanging up clothes and everything.
They have water, they, they have water.
That's what I'm saying, but I thought he had said you can't do that.
Yeah, that's leaf.
Yeah, they have water because there was an old homestead there.
Yeah. They tore the old house down in front of the Abigail Church.
I think we, they let him, he been there because he was gonna fix the house up supposedly.
I don't know.
No, you know where the house, you know where the church is.
Place, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
I don't know, I was just wondering.
Oh, yeah, you can have it, that side of, right side of him is, uh, is Caden Miller.
Caden lives in front of Opal's place.
Oh, yeah.
Or Allie's place. And then his place is in front of that church, Abigail.
He is living
It's the old, uh, was it the Burt Shaw?
Burt Shaw.
The old Burt Shaw house, he tore it down.
Put a camp ring in it.
It's a camping thing, yeah.
You count on the backside, on that back street, all it's colored.
Well, I was just wondering, cause it wasn't there at first, and now all of a sudden I see it there. Cause I don't go there with it all.
It's been there for a minute. Yeah, I mean, it's been there for a few months, but I, I know it's a six month, it's six months, isn't it? Yes, ma'am, I think so.
I know what you're talking about, now that you said that the old house was there and they tore it down, I know what you're talking about.
Cause it's right front, down from the church, yeah.
Hey, one more, I got to my thing. Trailer been sitting there, its grandfather down on property, he owns the property, turn a law seal and head towards school, the trailer's sitting across the trailer park. I'm pretty sure it's gotta live there.
Where?
On the front side, right?
Where you turn there, Jimmy knows.
It's one of them twice.
Right behind James there, that old trailer.
That old trailer, somebody lives in there?
I didn't know that, but
He might be living there, he might be doing something else, I've seen him twice, right before dark, headed that trailer, crossed the road in front of me, I'd be going to the hunting property. And, uh, a black guy, about middle age, but he stayed in that trailer or he's doing something else in that trailer.
I see him walking a lot.
Is it, is it one of Audrey's trailers?
I think that's Audrey's property over there.
That's all.
Audrey goes on that property.
Their trailers have been there.
There used to be more than that.
Well, she used to have
They thought there was one there now.
The trailer sales lot was there, and the trailer park is on that other side.
But there's only one there now, yeah.
Anyway, Michelle, we make there clean that up, that's been there, I don't know, twenty years.
I mean, y'all don't have, um, a co- or such a problem.
Yesterday, we had two small kids, they lived in my children's room there, outside playing with the toys, I mean, little bitty kids.
They were, they were hanging around, yeah.
We went outside to see who they were, it broke the rug.
Saturday, they were ru- running around and around the light pole on the corner, where they're not, but maybe four or five years old. At that trail, at the park, they were on the park side, but they were just running around and around that big light pole right there on the corner by the highway.
But they's in my yard swinging on the swing.
Oh, my God. So they're crossing the road.
Jason, when you out, he, just he's by there checking.
Knock on the door.
See what's going on.
Don't you do that. No, I don't think there's no door on it.
They probably just using a bed.
Yeah.
I seen that guy walking a lot, ain't there?
Behind Jimmy's house. Hey, another thing, Timothy ain't here, but mattress at the ball field, at the school play, that's been there two months. That thing needs to be picked, some people, they ask me and ask me about that mattress.
You want me to pick them up?
Send somebody, do something with that mattress.
Send your bar.
Bring them out, I'll burn it, I'm out, so, it's been there two months out that dumpster.
Yeah.
And people's ask me, hey, what's the problem with that mattress out there? I'll have it picked.
The problem is not where the, not the employees that we have, the problem is the people dumping the mattress out.
Yeah.
They always dump trash everywhere. Dumping your stuff out.
Always.
Yeah.
Hey, take it where it needs to be put.
One more thing, I know y'all made a decision, the trees out here.
Looks good though.
They gone, like, yeah, that's good, but y'all decided on what trees to plant back? The thing is
The crape myrrh.
Have you checked them? See, I was gonna check with Charles, the time to plant is now.
Get them crape myrrh, support it long.
Then you don't have to take it care of.
Jason, you were going back to the place you've been going to, the nursery he's been going to?
I mean, if you can get them cheaper.
I'll check with Charles, he might even, crape myrrh.
Yeah.
That's what, uh
And we can get different colored ones.
We wanted one for every color, for every, to represent each person, you know what I'm saying?
Right?
Yeah.
So you need to plant them, to, you know, move on, but anyway, y'all decide what size, just, you know, uh,
If you keep them trimmed, they're not gonna get put so big, just keep them trimmed.
I'm talking about, you know, you buy, you buy a tree, we step it down, one time to the bill as well. Nah, I just take about ten or twelve foot.
You don't want that big, do you, Jason? Maybe eight?
Yeah, that'll work.
But probably be in a three gallon bucket, bucket.
That's all I got, I said, my head's Well, I need to get you.
You have anything?
No, ma'am.
How about you, Miss Chad?
Nah, just, I like them, see them trees going, and nobody getting, getting any.
Jimmy? Do you have anything? Jason?
You do, I don't.
Jason, you have anything?
Oh, yeah, we, we can go on, on the thing, plant.
Ain't gonna be much.
When the freeze happened, we had a thing on the Palmer machine break.
Flow meter.
Flow meter on the Palmer machine break, and
I don't think it's gonna be very expensive, but I had to try to get, yeah, I asked him soon, like, tomorrow and I'll start looking.
That's it.
I just had one thing, or two things I was supposed to check on, can I tell you about them, just so I know what to do? The law, he's coming, the guy that we always use, he's coming, but, cause of the holidays, we got messed up. And then the stripe, I got a quote, so the stripes, uh, had a guy come out, it's twelve hundred and seventy-two dollars, and I, do I need to have more quotes than that?
What do I need?
Cause I, I just found one, one fellow locally, you know, that did it, so I wasn't sure if I needed to have more quotes than that to bring, or just the one?
Does, um, Geller and Gettler does it?
Okay, I don't know, I just went under striping, under moving on. Okay. We have to, okay, yeah, I just wanted to know before I Geller and Gettler. Anybody have anything else you want to discuss tonight? I'll make a motion for adjourned.
I'll say it.
Adjourned.